Welcome to the Town of Dayton's regular selectmen's meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 23rd, and it is 6:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. You can join us on meeting with the meeting ID 828-8024-1109 with the passcode of 364-577. And the phone number to call in is 309-205-3325. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at boardofselectmen@dyton-massma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting, via Zoom, call in by phone at 309-205-3325, or continue to play on Dayton Channel 9 and at YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. I'm going to call to order first, please.
Leonard Hull is present. Good evening.
Nicole Mello is present.
And Peter Karen is present. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'm almost also going to ask you that, at the end of the Pledge of Allegiance, you stand for a moment of silence?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, one member of the Dayton community has passed. On Sunday, August 20th, my Tina Grover, town resident for over 50 years, passed away. She celebrated her 91st birthday in July. She was married to the late William Bill Grover, who was head of the Social Studies Department at Dyton-Hobart Regional High School. They have three children, William Junior, Carl, and Christina. She was the sister of the late Joseph C. Harrington, who was the first principal and second superintendent of schools at Dyton-Hobart Regional High School, Dyton-Hobart Regional School District. Mrs. Grover taught in the Berkeley School System for several years and was also a principal at the Holy Name School in Far River. A memorial mass will be held in her honor this Saturday at the St. Nicholas Church at 11:00 AM. Thoughts and condolences go out to the Grover family at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a slight change in the agenda tonight, and I'm going to ask that somebody make the recommendation that we just take one item out of order.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take Article 9, New Business Item A, Review Discuss an Act, the recommendation for on-call peer review engineering services, Weston and Sampson, 100 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Massachusetts, be taken out of order.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Jim, are you there? I think you're muted.
Yep, I can get to the button quick enough. Sorry about that.
So right, obviously, we have met, but there's two more members of the Board of Selectmen that I thought would be appropriate that you meet. Leonard Mills here to my right.
Leonard Hull.
Leonard Hull, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Lenny Mills.
He's over.
Nicole Mello to my left. And obviously, we're talking a major change here with the way we do business, and it was important to me that you meet them as well. Can you just give us a quick overall of what you guys are going to be doing for us?
Certainly. So we've been hired to assist with on-call peer review and of development applications. And what that generally means is when an application comes in, if it requires review of technical nature, civil design, traffic, environmental issues, et cetera, that we would assist you folks with that. And then we would put together a peer review memo or letter. We'd submit that to the planning board, although this could be the planning board, the Conservation Commission, zoning board, et cetera. And then we would be available to also present our findings at any of those board meetings or hearings.
So basically, it's a one-stop shop for us. Unlike before, where the planning board, the zoning board, and conservation committee and Stormwater all had different engineers, we're going to have one engineer now who can communicate with all three, all four boards at one time to let one know what the other is doing. It's going to make it a lot easier and streamline it for us. Do you guys have any questions to Jim?
No, just comment. I heard some wonderful things from Stormwater and the work that you have done from them. And I also heard from the conservation agent today, Lisa Caledonia, and she participated in the interview process and was very impressed with the broad number of areas that you cover in-house rather than having to farm it out. And that's really important for good communication, and I am willing to support.
Okay, great. Nicole, do you have any questions?
My only question was, so what was the process of narrowing down to this consulting agency?
Yes, so we, so after the board's June 28th meeting, we put out a bid that was publicly advertised and posted. We invited firms to submit proposals to be the town's on-call peer review engineering firm. We had that so out in public, and we also posted through the state database as well to make sure we were soliciting, so like, any interested firm who wanted to work, wanted to work for us. And so based on that posting, we actually received proposals from six entities. We actually created a panel that was made up of the chairman, so like, of year board Chairman Karen, and myself as the chief procurement officer, but also the chairs and the staff representatives from each of the, from each of the boards and committees, like, who would be, who would be working with the firm. So we, so we had Kerry Easterday, who's the office manager for the planning board and zoning board, we had the chairman of the planning board, we had the chairman of the zoning board, we had the chairman of CONCOM and the conservation agent, and then we also had other chairwoman of the Stormwater Committee as well. So we met, we met to review the six proposals. Of those six proposals, we met, so earlier this weekend, we interviewed three, three of the six firms who submitted proposals. We interviewed them, and then from there, there was a vote and a recommendation made to recommend to the selectmen Weston and Sampson.
Any questions? Any more questions? Okay, is there a proposal on the floor to accept?
Mr. Karen, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Weston and Sampson of 100 Foxborough Boulevard, Foxborough, Mass. as the Town of Dayton's on-call peer review engineering service.
I'll second that.
Hearing this vote, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen authorize Town Administrator Michael Mullen to enter into contract negotiations with Weston and Sampson, and also to be the signatory for the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Peter Karen is an aye as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like I said, Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we return to the regular order of business.
Second it, Nicole?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Very much a pleasure, my pleasure. Thank you again.
Great. We're going to move on to scheduled appointments. Review Discuss an Act, and Appointment of Office Assistant to the Sewer Department and Conservation Commission, Maureen Cain. Maureen, are you here? Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing excellent, thank you. You've met the other two selectmen?
I don't think we've met, no.
Well, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Great. Woody, are you going to speak on her behalf?
Thank you, board. We had an interview Monday afternoon, the 21st, with myself, office manager Diane Curtis, Karen Brady, chairman of the CONCOM, and Lisa Caledonia, the conservation agent, with Maureen. She did outstanding job, she answered all our questions.
Great.
I think everyone was satisfied. She meets all the criteria for the job. She just recently moved to Rehoboth from Wareham. She has no friends and family here, so there's no nepotism. And we're very happy with our decision, and we would hope that you would appoint her this evening.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Cain, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm just very.
You don't have to.
I'm very happy to work with all of you and work with the town.
It sounds like we're going to be in great shape with you aboard, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Regards to your hours, you're going to be splitting between conservation and sewer. What will be your hour breakdown?
So as of now, after I spoke to Diane, I'm going to be spending 10 hours working for the sewer department, and the other eight hours I'll be with the conservation.
So a total of 18?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Nicole, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Maureen Cain as the Sewer Department Assistant to the Sewer Department and Conservation Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to appoint Maureen Cain as office assistant to the Sewer Department and Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Maureen, good luck.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the night if you don't want to.
Thank you guys, it was lovely meeting you.
It's nice meeting you.
Just one other thing, please make sure you stop in and see Shara, our town clerk, to sign it, to get sworn in.
Sure, I can do that. Thank you guys so much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you too. Next on the agenda is Thomas Ferry Highway Superintendent to discuss road openings on Maple Street and Prospect Street.
Good evening. So it's, I believe you guys have the paperwork for both sites?
Yes.
So if there are any questions, let's do the Maple Street first.
Sure. I don't have any questions. I see the markings already there, and when do you see it going forward?
That is just for borings. Mass DOT, that is Mass DOT's job.
Okay.
We just, we just filled in from time to time with the investigation of a possible new bridge in that location.
Sure.
So the borings is important ahead of that, and they're aware of a detail officer with their lane closure when they do that.
Okay, great. And when do you see that getting done? You don't?
Leave it's next week.
Is it next week already?
It's actually, like, it got pushed back earlier today. The boring firm, they're anticipating their work dates are the 30th, 31st, and the 1st of September. So it's a week from Monday.
Yep, and one lane will be closed going in one direction and, okay. Mr. Hull, do you have any questions?
No, you answer it.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mello, do you have any question?
No, I don't.
All right. Then I need a motion on the floor to approve the road openings for Maple Street and Prospect Street, or Maple Street first, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Maple Street Road Opening Project.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Now Prospect Street, any concerns about Prospect Street?
The only thing that's a little different with this one, it falls within our moratorium because it was paved in 2020.
Wow.
But usually, a new construction, we're not, we wouldn't hold up a new construction.
Yep.
And that's where we are tonight.
Okay.
And a lot of, a lot of tonight's decision will help that project still move forward.
Sure.
You know, to commence when that, so there's still some things pending. I believe that was forwarded to you, but we just need to do this discussion at this time.
Right, great, thank you.
Just two questions. First one, will there be any disturbance of traffic flow on that street?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The second question is, since it is an exception to the moratorium, I would assume it's for public safety reasons that we're spending the money that will be spent on this, is that correct?
But we wouldn't be spending any.
Okay, thank you.
It would be solely on the developer.
Thank you.
Yes.
As well as for the officer?
What's that?
As well as for the detail officer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mello, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the opening for Prospect Street?
One of the caveats, if I could recommend, the building commissioner, he weighed in earlier on this as well.
Okay.
And he did, he did ask the board that if, that if the board did approve the road opening permit, that it be granted with the following condition, and specifically that construction within the roadway cannot occur until the highway superintendent has been notified and a valid trench permit has been obtained from the Dayton Building Department. So he just asked, he asked that, he just asked that that be approved as a condition of the approval as well.
For Prospect Street or for both?
Yes.
Okay, just for Prospect?
Yeah, just for Prospect.
That seems fair. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the...
Road opening for Prospect Street?
Prospect Street Road Opening Project with the following condition, that the roadway cannot, road, construction within the roadway cannot occur until the highway superintendent has been notified and a valid trench permit has been obtained from the Dayton Building Department.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you, Mr. Ferry, for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to announcements?
The transfer station located at 865 Tremont Street has recently changed its hours. They are now open on Fridays from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Their third annual Dayton Firecracker Festival will take place on Saturday, September 9th, 2023, from 12:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The Friends of the Dayton Public Library are holding their first annual golf tournament on Sunday, September 17th, at Hazleton Golf Club in Rehoboth, starting at 11:00 AM. For more information and to register, please email dyntinfriends@gmail.com. The Town of Dayton's Food Bank will be held next on September 16th, 2023, located at the lower level of Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave.
And just to make note, the selectmen will have a reprieve from being part of the dunk tank at the Cracker Festival. Moving on to Town Administrator's Report, Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just have three quick updates. The first, I just want to remind everyone in town that the warrant for the special town, for the special town meeting that is set at this point for Monday, October 30th is now open, the warrant is now, the warrant will be open till September 21st. So I just want to publicly, I want to publicly just share that. I also just, with regards to the library building project, I actually worked the beginning of last week with the library director to resubmit the grant, to the grant application to the Mass Cultural Facilities Fund, that if approved, we, the first round of the grant funding that had, has also, that has already been approved by the state, actually was approved at the beginning of May, but we weren't included in that round, and the state actually gave us the ability to reapply for a round that will be announced in October. So the beginning of last week, we did that, like, and we reapplied for the $200,000 grant that we saw in February that would help us, that would offset the cost of the HVAC upgrades. So if we do get this grant, we will be able to not draw against $200,000 of the $323,000 that was approved by town meeting. We'd have another funding source for that, so we'd have the ability to return 200 of that $323,000 back to the CPC. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the fact that we were asked to reapply is a very positive step, and we expect to hear, like, about the resubmital of that application by October. So the, the time between now and then is, isn't that long, so we're hopeful about that. And also, I just wanted to give an update, like, on the Main Street culvert, the Main Street culvert construction work. Basically, like, as everyone in town knows, at this point, we have, we've been working with the police department, like, in the water district, there are portions of the Main Street roadway that are now closed. The mobilization, like, of the work, like, at this point, we'll also anticipate detrench, like, a lot of the trench work and construction, like, on the second culvert closer to Elm Street, to begin, to begin this coming Monday. So there will be, there will be updated detours and closures in that area, like, which, which later this week, we will be, we will be getting out on social media, like, inter signage in the area as well. But I just wanted to share that, that work, so like, on those three, working and around those three culverts are ongoing.
Okay.
Like, obviously, there has, there has been an inconvenience with the detours because of the work, unfortunately, it's just, you know, a part of the process in road construction. But at this point, we've also been in touch with the school district as well to make sure with the beginning of school, uh, 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 school bus routes. So, yeah, like, and all those other transportation aspects are able to, and to factor in that roadwork as well. So, like, I was actually in touch with the school superintendent earlier today, and, yeah, like, and we're going to work with them to make sure they have a plan to deal with it too.
How long do you foresee the culvert?
The culvert work, based on, based on, based on an updated construction timeline that was actually shared earlier today, there was an original, there was an original hope that the work would be done by around the 13th of September. Based on the work, like, at culvert number one, closer to William Street, they ended up, the construction company, like, ended up actually spending more time in that one.
Okay.
So that has, that has actually adjusted, but the schedule and the contingencies involved.
Right.
So they probably won't be done with the culverts until at this point, mid to late September.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Michael?
No.
So I just wanted to get, thank you. We're going to move on to selectmen's reports. And obviously, I'm in solid waste in transfer station, and I just want to give a very quick update. We, we talked earlier in the spring about how we were going to streamline our process for collecting the funds for people to use the transfer station. And we are now online with debit and credit cards and electronic checks, as well as the new hours that are posted for everyone to see. Just talking to Mr. Ferry, I guess we haven't received much pushback, but possibly a little bit, I guess.
It would be with the checks, right?
With the checks.
Loud talk about the credit debt.
Right, which makes it easier all around for everybody. And that's all I have for the solid waste. We haven't met yet because there hasn't been a reason to, and we will probably have a meeting in September.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Hull, do you have anything about the water district?
Oh, I have quite a bit on the water district and the school district as well.
You got Conservation Commission too?
Really, nothing.
Nothing?
Okay. We have an appointment this evening.
Yep.
That is on the agenda.
Correct.
And that was the major focus of the meeting. They did have some hearings, but those are issues that involve litigation, and as a result, not appropriate to discuss publicly. Regarding the water district, the first big piece of news, John Harris, Pleasant Street resident, on August 14th, was elected as the third commissioner to fill a vacancy. There is a lot going on over at the water district. First of all, a engineering firm, Environmental Partners, a division of Apex, was hired at the cost of $463,000 to begin work on the Cedar Street 1 well. And that work is contingent upon approval at a special town meeting held by the water district, since the money for that will need to come from the capital stabilization account. And that will take a two-thirds vote, and they have not set a date as to when that special meeting will be held at the Dayton Middle School. The next thing they wanted me to mention is that they have been, for over a year, working on repairing, replacing the meter units in each home. And there are currently 498 meters that still have not been, people have not called in to set up an appointment so they can be replaced. Letters will be going out soon. They have sent letters in the past, and they are, wanted to remind people that it is possible that water could be shut off if people do not comply with this upgrade request. One of the things that is happening in these 400 night homes, 498 homes, is they are getting estimated water bills. And my understanding is those bills are liberal. So it's important that people tend to this. They might see a savings in their water bill if they do, and they also may recoup some of the additional charges. The water district also wanted me to reassure people that the skim coat that was placed on Main Street is not the final coat. The finished product will include reclamation and a complete repayment of Main Street, and that will be done by the Dayton Highway Department. The last item is a real serious matter that impacts not only the Town of Dayton, but throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and they are asking for our assistance on this matter. are asking for our assistance on this matter. The Environmental Protection Agency, and not the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is setting the PFOs standard. The current PFOs standard is 20. EPA, going to a vote, will drop that level to four. That vote will be taken this winter. That will have a huge impact on water treatment systems throughout the Commonwealth, and will cost Dayton an additional $1 to $2 million to upgrade their filter system so that they will begin, so they will be able to lower the PFOs level of the water to that. It is also impacting in a negative way negotiations with the town of Somerset for the purchase of the Somerset well. As you know, the negotiations have been going on for over a year, and that is one of the items that is holding it up, because they're not sure when it will take effect and how, and who will be responsible for it. Will it be the town of Somerset, or will it be Dayton? They are asking if the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Mullen, could reach out to Congressman Jake Arshon Claus, Representative Pat Hadad, and Mark Pacheco, and express the concerns of community leaders of the impact that this law change will have. At the MMA conference, I attended a meeting with the state attorney representative of the governor's office, and in the case of Bonestell County, the impact will be over $1 billion. And their frustration was that of anger, because the state had no answer in regards to financial support or the creation of grants to help communities to deal with this. So the water district is asking if we could take a proactive approach and work with them to reach out and see if some funding can come down from the state or the feds to deal with this matter. And that is all I have in the water district.
Before you continue with the school, don't interrupt you. So there's going to be a mandate, but no funding to back it up?
At this point in time, that is correct.
Okay.
Sounds about right.
That is why it is important that we reach out and let our representatives know how important we're going to need help.
Yep.
Peter, Tom has a question.
Yes, sir.
Tom Galucci, 2086 Palmer Street. I would remind you all that a mandate is not a law. You can ignore them. You can basically give them the middle finger if you want to. A mandate is just that. It's a mandate. They insist that we do something, but we don't have to do it. It's not the law, period. Now, they may withhold funds or something like that, but we can withhold funds on our end. So it's a two-way street there, because they rely on us for our tax money. And when you look at it, there are so many projects in the pipeline, there are so many expenses that are going to hit this town in the next five to 10 years. We simply can't afford all this nonsense. Every time somebody comes along with a crazy idea in their head about, oh, let's have a, you know, name it, an outdoor gym at the schools, right? Anytime somebody names something like that, it's yay, let's get on board. At some point, the adults have to take charge, and we really don't have the money for any of this crap. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding schools, there have been many, many changes in personnel, leadership of Dayton-Rohbuth Regional School District within the last month. Last evening, Superintendent Rooney introduced the new principal at Dayton Middle School, Brienne Kelleher, and also the new principal of Dayton-Rohbuth Regional High School, Dr. Jacqueline Ash, and her two new assistants, Dustin DeMuras and Arnold Chamanell. And in addition, it was announced that they have posted Mr. Baxter's position, the business manager's position. They are going to extend it another month because they only had one applicant. That's a very important position. Mr. Baxter has agreed to work as a consultant, but I announce this to the public. If you know of someone who has experience in business administration, you do not need to be certified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for this position, but they could really use someone with a good, strong financial background. In addition, a special shout out to Chief Nichols, Officer Hathaway, and Detective Richards for conducting an orientation with the school administrators of Dayton Middle, Dayton Elementary, and Dayton-Rohbuth Regional High School to review safety protocols, and also a meeting that they had with Rehoboth Police Department, strengthening joint support in case of a critical incident. And in addition, message from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They sent communication to Mr. Rooney stating that they are taking a very close look at the Dayton Elementary and Dayton Middle School project. The primary focus from the MSBA will be the Dayton Elementary School building, with some effort to address egress and access issues to the Dayton Middle School. But the primary focus will be on the Dayton Elementary School. They will, in the, they will be giving recommendations early next year as to where Dayton will be on the list. Based on their preliminary review, we are right now on the top 32, and we will definitely move up. How far, I don't know. We'll know that January or February. It appears to be happening faster than anyone expected, so.
Stay tuned.
Have to watch that closely.
What do you mean when on the list? Like, lists on schools they're going to address, or what does the list mean?
Well, what happens on the list, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts each year puts so much money aside, and they added, Governor Haley added another $100 million to the pot. Originally, it was going to be 300 million, it's 400 million. And then they list the schools by priority, and then they draw a line based on how much money they have. So how many schools are covered with 400 million? I don't know. The next year, they'll be, they'll go down the list even further.
Okay.
So if you're one to four, you're starting real soon. After that, it all depends on how big the projects are. So it's moving faster than what people anticipated. They see a great need at the Dayton Elementary, especially in the issue of trailers. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We're going to move on. There is no old business, correct?
No.
All right. We're going to move on to new business. Obviously, we've already taken care of A. B, review, discuss, and act, recommendations to appoint Tyler Hazel as special police officer. My first question, is there a reason why the acting chief or he is not here tonight?
He, because Officer Hazel has already, has, has already, he's already served as a full-time officer. Still, so all this really is, is a recommendation to, still essentially transfer into another role.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to accept Tyler Hazel as a special police officer?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tyler Hazel as a special police officer to the Dayton Police Department.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. Review, discuss, and act, liquor license for Bristol County Agricultural High School Foundation, 135 Center Street.
And we have a one, yeah, like a one-day application from, yeah, like from Bristol Aggie, and, and everything, everything here is in order, and I want to thank Ms. Brady for working with the Aggie to bring this to, yeah, to fruition this evening. And yeah, the one day would be, like, on the 16th of September of 2023.
Any questions?
Well, actually, an observation. This is a very important event for the Bristol County Agricultural School. It is a fundraiser. They have an auction. It is a wonderful evening. They do it with a lot of class, and they raise a lot of money. We are invited to attend. If we, we can reserve a table if we would like.
Which we have done in the past.
Mrs. Goulat usually go, well, two years ago, we were invited.
Yep.
Last year, they didn't send out an invitation. They assumed, because we approved the liquor license, that we knew we were invited. So when I spoke to Mr. Costa, right?
Yes.
He said, you're invited, and if you want a table, let me know. Nancy goes all the time. There is an auction. It is an evening where money is spent.
Auction of cows, or?
Very good. Well, no, 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 no.
Yeah, we don't have to stand outside and watch cows go to the bathroom, do we?
In the rain.
Okay.
A lot of alumni come back. Many of them are pretty prestigious business owners. So it's a wonderful evening. You have entertainment, an auction, a really good meal. And we get to meet all the teachers and administrators.
Nice. Any questions, Nicole?
No.
Comments? Okay. Then is there a motion on the floor to accept the liquor license for, request?
Mr. Karen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license for the Bristol County Agricultural High School Foundation for September 60.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. D, review, discuss, and act, an entertainment license for Town Redemption Center at 1901 County Street. It's just pretty straightforward.
Extremely straightforward, yes. I like that they're having an invitation-only event on the 15th of, of September. As I mentioned, it's invitation-only. They are going to have some live entertainment from, from someone from American Idol, who is not me. That's kind of a joke, huh? But, and, yeah, like, it is informal, so I do recommend approval.
Any concern about noise in the local residence with this live band outside?
We, the event, the Redemption Center, the Redemption Center is in the Center Plaza complex.
Right.
And, and, I like, I like, and it is extremely time-limited during that Saturday, happening from 10 to 2. So it's extremely limited.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the floor to accept the entertainment license?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
Actually, it's a concern. We have this approval request for one-day entertainment license, and I noticed they're going to serve food, and I don't see approval by the Board of Health.
They, based on this application, the application makes it very clear in the top third of the application that it would require a Board of, so Board of Health permits, so based on that, I would recommend that the Board approve it to contingent, so on the Board of Health and any other permits being met.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the entertainment license for Town Line Redemption Center, 1901 County Street, with the stipulation that all food service requirements of the Board of Health permitting be completed, followed.
I'll second that.
Yep. I believe there's an asterisk on that. Food service requires Board of Health permits. alcohol requires a one-day liquor license. So they would not be able to do it without the permits from the Board of Health.
Yes.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Review, discuss, and act, recommendation to appoint Jason LeChance as a voting member of the Dayton Conservation Commission. Is Jason LeChance here?
Yes, he is.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
I knew we were deciding board. Are you a member now?
Of, he's an alternate member.
Alternate member. So you're going to become the voting, a voting member?
Yes, please.
Great. Why do you want to do that?
Because I like the town. I have a background in outdoor construction experience. I like being outside, and I want to help the town.
Okay. How long have you been on the committee?
Month or so.
Wow. And you're already going to be a voting member. That's terrific.
I've been working with Lisa for the past few years.
Oh, have you?
On matters throughout town.
Okay.
Some of mine, some others. Just talk to her here and there.
Sure. Any questions from?
Well, actually, it's an observation. As the representative of Conservation, I've had the opportunity to follow Jason for the month that he's been on the board, and he brings to the table a unique knowledge that only Lisa has. So it would be a big help to Conservation and to Lisa, that his understanding of rare and endangered plant and animal species are very important in visiting conservation land and identifying what can and can't be removed, or what can't and can't be disturbed in the case of animals.
Okay, great.
And another thing I'd like to say is the construction aspect of how these people come in and speak to a board, board members, that for the most part, besides Jack, have not physically done it. So there's a lot of people that stand behind this microphone that can say whatever they want, and the people sitting over there are like, okay, okay. So having some of that construction experience might help the board understand what they're trying to say, and how they're trying to do it.
Absolutely.
Be a neutral part that seen both sides would be beneficial, to not push people away so much, and maybe help them understand the board's opinion, or me try to help the board understand what they're trying to say without pulling the wool over their eyes.
All right. Good. Okay, thank you. You had an observation. Any questions?
No, I don't.
Nicole, any question?
No.
Okay. Any motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jason LeChance as a voting member of the Dayton Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for stepping forward. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the warrants, August 17, 2023, be paid. Item 8A-24, $116,603.90. Item 8B-24, $582,974.50. Item 8C-24, $2,045.07. 8D-24, $60,587.50.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Boy, we spend a lot of money on them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the warrant for August 14th, I'm sorry, August 24th, 2023, be paid. Item 9A-24, $112,872.06. Item 9B-24, $103,081.06. Item 9B dash 24, $103,855.27.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Thank you. We're gonna move on to correspondence. We have two letters this evening, one from Charlene and Donald Hershey concerning the outing that was just held by the Council on Aging Summer Fest at the Lions Pavilion. And that letter reads, "Board of Selectmen, Town of Dyton, this is dated August 17th of 2023. My wife and I attended the Dyton COA Summer Fest at the Lions Pavilion on August 16th, 2023, and had a great time. Many senior folk were in attendance. The live band was well-received. Lunch was provided and a goody bag of practical articles distributed. We were especially impressed by the team of Bella, Laura and Trish. They anticipated all the needs of the attendees, which produced a smooth-running event. The team also had the assistance of serious-minded students from the cooperative program in Dyton. Another nice touch was the new bocce court behind the pavilion that were, was built by the Lions members, Tony Russo and Don Herback. COVID broke up the rhythm of the COA to provide services, but they're back now in full swing. Our thank you to the COA for the great time and all the work the team put into it. We know many other programs are in a pipeline and look forward to participating in them. Regards, Charlene and Don Hershey." The next correspondence is a letter from Jonathan Gale regarding resignation from the Dyton Commission on Disability. His letter is rather lengthy, and I don't really believe we are in the practices of reading resignations. So, um, it is in our packet, it's on the agenda, and Mr. Mullen will be on the website as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we need two, uh, two votes, uh, I'm sorry, one vote, a letter to accept the reservation of, resignation of Jonathan Gale.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from the Dyton Commission on Disability of Jonathan Gale.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Actually, under discussion, well, no.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. You have something to discuss, sir?
Yes. This evening, I received a phone call from a member of the Council of Disability with concerns that several, three to be exact, meetings have been canceled because of a lack of a quorum. Because Mr. Gale's resignation now leaves the board with only three members, I would like to make a motion that we post the two vacancies with Council on Disability with a closing date of September 13th. And that applicants submit their requests to join the board to the head of HR, Karen Brady, in the Board of Selectmen's office.
How many members are on there now?
Three.
Three. They don't have a quorum.
They're supposed to have five.
Yep. Okay.
But the likelihood of, you know, one person's out.
Yep.
And they don't have any.
Meeting gets canceled, okay. So there's a motion on the floor to, um, post the openings. Is there a second?
I second that, um, I just have a question.
Yep.
So September 13th, are we going, what are the basis off that date? Do we have a timeline that we usually have these things open for? Or we not, we usually don't post a timeline for these, so that date is fine. I'm just thinking about when we do applications, we give a certain amount of time for that, but for this.
Why are we picking the thirteenth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The reason why I picked the thirteenth is that I'd like to follow this issue closely, and I believe the thirteenth is our next meeting.
Okay.
The reason that I want to follow this closely is twofold. One, to see how many applicants apply, and also to encourage COD to move on this matter in a timely fashion with interviews. And I want to make people aware. Under the policies of the Board of Selectmen, if a board is unable to maintain a quorum for any length of time, the Board of Selectmen do have the authority to call a joint meeting with that particular board to fill those positions, contingent upon, obviously, applicants. I'm not asking we move on the thirteenth, but to have the thirteenth to revisit this issue, and then we'll discuss further action, should it be necessary. I respect, the COD has the right to fill their position, you know, make recommendations to us, but I want to get the message across that we're doing this in a timely fashion.
No, I agree, I'd like it to be a quick process so that they can refill and they, they can meet again. And know that they can meet, thank you.
Here's a question for the Selectmen or, or Mr. Mullen. What happens if they don't fill it?
The, um, the board, your board is the appointing authority as well. So there's, uh, there's nothing preventing the board, so if the, so, so if the commission doesn't meet, so it doesn't have a quorum be, or so is not able to meet because they don't have a quorum, there isn't anything preventing the board, um, uh, from making appointments to, to actually ensure a quorum as well.
Yeah, but what if nobody's interested? What happens to the?
That happened with the open space.
Right. Correct, just tell apart.
We can't, if we don't have applicants, we can't do anything.
Yeah.
But if we have applicants.
Absolutely, I understand.
They do have enough members at this time to meet, but they just, if one drops off, that's why.
That's why they don't have.
Yeah, they can't.
Okay. All right, I understand, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen's Board of Health Special Meeting Minutes of June 6, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Board of Health Special Meeting Minutes of June 6, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Now the approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular minutes meetings of August 9th, 2023.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting Minutes of August 9th, 2023.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Now we move into public input. Is there anybody here that wants to be heard? Yes, Mr. Woody.
From Woods, 158 H Street. When Mr. Hull was talking about the school, and, uh, last time Mr. Rooney was here, he was talking about getting a new school for the town of Dyton, and he said that it would be hundred percent paid for by the state. And then at the annual town meeting, he got up with another spiel and said fifty percent of it would be paid for by the state. So which one is it? People have been asking me this question. So I'd like to have an answer for them. But that ain't all I have to say.
Yep.
Just, just something that I would expect you guys to look into.
Sure.
Obviously, we can't afford a hundred percent of it.
I agree with you.
And I'm not sure if we can afford fifty percent of it, to tell you the truth. And my other question is, we still haven't decided how we're gonna pay for Bristol Plymouth High School. Somebody's dragging their feet on that. I'm not pointing at you, Mike, but somebody's dragging their feet. I think the town residents should know what we're up against before we start looking at building other massive projects. I know we get the fire chiefs looking at a new fire station or an addition. We're on the hook for Bristol Aggie High School, and we're on the hook for, what, twenty-two million dollars for Bristol Plymouth? So are we gonna have a debt exclusion? I don't know. Are we gonna have a Prop Two and a Half override? I don't know that either.
Yep.
But I know that Dyton has very high taxes already.
Sure.
We're close to fifteen dollars.
Yep.
I can see seventeen dollars in the future, within the next two years. You know, once we stop paying on Bristol Plymouth and the Aggie school, we're still paying for our police department.
Yep.
Finance Committee's doing a very good job over the years, you know, using money out of stabilization.
Sure.
But where's all this money coming from?
Right.
You know, that's, I, I want to know that, and, and I think we've drug our feet long enough on the Bristol Plymouth issue.
Yep.
And it's time to do something.
Okay.
We need to have a vote. We can't just keep dragging our feet, you know, and, and I hope, and I really hope that we don't use the tactics, you know, to sell this project, the Bristol Plymouth project that we're on the hook for.
Right.
Regardless. But please don't come threatening us, you know, with major cuts to fire and police.
Yep.
Because, you know, that's the tactics that all cities and towns like to use.
Sure.
We're not gonna attack our public safety. Those would be the last people to go, in my opinion, I'm not in charge, and I don't want to be in charge. That's why you guys are here, and I support you, and I think that this Board of Selectmen is doing a fine job. It's one of the best boards put together here in probably the last twenty years.
Thank you, it's nice of you to say.
But people are concerned, you know, um, the economy's real bad.
Yep.
You know, gas prices are going sky-high again. Winter's coming, oil's gonna go up. Groceries are sky-high, okay? We just can't be buying new things. We got, all we can handle right now is to just get by.
Right.
You know? And I'm speaking for myself.
Sure.
You know, and I see a lot of people in a lot worse shape than I'm in.
Yep.
But, you know, these things need to be hammered out.
We'll get answers for you.
Okay. I, I'd like an answer fairly soon.
Sure.
You know, within the next month.
Absolutely.
We should at least have a plan on how we're gonna handle the Bristol Plymouth school.
Right.
And how we plan on paying for that.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of talk lately about the schools, what's going on up at the high school.
Yes, sir.
Parking over here at the elementary school. No one's using common sense in some of these situations, as the parking, and when all the parents come to pick up their children.
Right.
You know, the same time that the buses are there. You know, my, just my idea, and I'm gonna throw this out there. You know, you might say, hey, that's a dumb idea, Woody. Maybe this. But if you're gonna pick up your children at school, maybe you should wait ten minutes after the bus leaves and have a separate time to release students that don't ride the bus. And if you look at the buses that are traveling around the town of Dyton, most of them are empty because everybody gets a ride from mommy or daddy. You know, nobody wants to get in the loser cruiser, is what they call it, you know? But we're on the hook to provide these buses for our children.
Correct.
You know, whether or not your kid gets on it, that's your choice.
Yep.
But we still have to pay for that bus.
Sure.
You know, it's a shame to see the buses drive around empty. You know, and then you go by the school and there's a big line of SUVs. You know, something needs to be done. I, I'll bet you, if you ask little Johnny to stay ten minutes after school to get a ride home, mommy, things would change.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you gotta say something?
Couple of things. In regards to Mr., in regards to Mr. Mullen, comment in regards to Mr. Mullen. There's no I in team. Mr. Mullen is part of our team. We haven't dragged our feet. We are looking at a clearer understanding of what the finances are going to be before we put numbers together to come before the town. We have a responsibility to do due diligence, to tighten our budget as much as possible before we throw a number out for a vote for doing either a debt exclusion or a Prop Two and a Half override. And we plan on doing that. And one of the things that I can assure you, and I think both of you know, and the public will know, I'll be reaching out to the public, asking for their input, on what we can afford to cut, what we need. We will listen, and then we'll make decisions. There is no way that the town of Dyton can, in the, pay for BP through the operating budget. So I can assure you, a vote is coming. But before we come to you, we want to have a, a number that's realistic, and whether or not it can be done. Regarding police and fire, from a political point of view, we all know the impact that police and fire have on the community, both politically and as a safety measure for the community, especially our seniors. And our, our seniors would not tolerate massive cuts in police and fire, and that isn't our intent. With that being said, we got work to do. We will begin work very, very soon on that. I'm sure Mr. Mullen has already started looking into that.
Absolutely. The, the, oh, I'm sorry.
In regards to the access of Dyton Elementary, Dyton Middle School, or, as it's more famously known as, the road to nowhere. That proposal was defeated unanimously by the Board of Selectmen because the plan, and they didn't do due diligence in all the issues that you mentioned about traffic studies, about what the school itself could do. And that was never presented to the voters, nor the Board of Selectmen. It was a poorly conceived plan. And if it is a poorly conceived plan, again, this member will not vote in favor of it. So we have a lot of work to do. They haven't even appointed a building committee yet. So we got a ways to go. And the other thing is, we don't know where we're going to be on the list. That list won't be out until January, and it might be three or four years down the road. So there'll be time for input. But the most important thing is lines of communication. And we, we will keep the public aware. Transparency is very important. Thank you.
In all fairness to the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Mullen, the wheels have been in motion. Ready, are we ready to take the public? Not yet. We still have a lot of questions that we need answered as well. But rest assured, if, if we can have an answer in a month, we'll have it. If it's two months, then we'll definitely have it. But, uh, it's, it's not a board, and it's not Mr. Mullen just sitting here doing nothing. It's, it's a discussion that we have several times a week over how to achieve a balanced budget without cuts to services. Certainly, we don't want to see our police officers or our fire department cut in any way and hurt in any way. Town employees, we don't want to see layoffs. But it, it's a massive project, the BP, as well as every budget that we, we look at is, is a project right now. But we'll have answers for you.
Thank you very much.
Coming from, from us as, as Selectmen.
Right, I'm not singling you out, but I'm just saying, people are asking me.
Sure. Absolutely, I'm sure they are.
People are afraid to speak up on the mic, I'm sorry.
Right, and, and they shouldn't be afraid to speak up, uh, uh, on their behalf. And if they want you to be the spokesman, that, that, that can be fine, too. Uh, Mrs. Mill, do you have any comments or anything?
No, I don't.
Mr. Woody's response. Okay, anybody else out there that has public input? Okay, hearing none. We've approved the minutes. We're gonna go into executive session. We have a, a quick, uh, things to discuss. So I'm going to read the executive session, and then we'll take a vote, and then unfortunately, um, the room will have to empty. This is the executive session. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, the chair does declare, uh, we're going to discuss the clerical union under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. And then we are going to approve the executive minutes, or no, uh, discuss approval of the executive minutes meetings from August 9th. So is there a motion on the floor to go into executive session?
So move.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.